Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have three items. Item number one, approval of the minutes from September 14, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, is there any discussions or changes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 2-2020 SCADA system radio upgrade. Good evening, Travis.
I'll start off by saying our existing SCADA system consists of radio communicating between nine wells, one booster station, three water towers, two stand pipes, and two master sites. The wellhouses and booster stations communicate with the towers and stand pipes via ethernet radios. There is a radio ring set up between the towers and stand pipes such that if communications are lost between any two of these sites, the path of data travel between these sites is reversed to maintain communications. The master PLC and SCADA computers for the system are located at the water utility office with a backup server located at our VOC treatment center. The PLC collects the data from remote sites via radios for display at our SCADA computers and storage in the historical database. So now it brings us to today. Earlier this year, we were informed that our current SCADA radios are no longer available. With not having spare radios on hand and not having the ability to purchase or repair our current radios, we immediately started the process for updating the radios. A radiopath study was performed during the design to test communication paths between the sites and determine the best possible communication paths using the proposed radio equipment. The radiopath study determined our signal strength was very good. The study also consisted of a voltage standing wave ratio. That, this verifies integrity of the existing antenna, the cables, the connectors, which should be found average to below average. The replacement of these items is covered under the bid alternative number one on the bid tabulation summary sheet. Because the replacement parts and services of the existing radios are no longer available, all the existing radios are being proposed to be replaced. The Water Utility along with Strand Associates find LW Allen LLC to be qualified and capable of performing the project and recommend proceeding with the award a lump sum based bid of $114,600 and a bid alternative number one of $6,553 to LW Allen LLC. Water Utility money will be used for this project. Any questions?
All right, do I motion?
Second.
Okay, any questions for Travis?
Just one question, you said it's not possible to update what we have or work with it or have it repaired or kind of add on?
No, we have been, we typically, just to kind of give you a little more overview, we normally have one spare radio available. And so when a radio goes down, which is, it happens, it's so unpredictable, typically we'll program that current radio, put it in line, take that radio, have it sent out to get repaired. If it can't get repaired, then we purchase a new one. Our vendors, our engineering, they, it all came to everybody surprised that they no longer are making the radios, supporting the radios, or repairing the radios. The problem is, is that you can't take radio A and think it's going to work with a different, absolutely different model, brand name, it doesn't work that way. Typically, the models and brands have to be linked together.
When was the radios originally from? Do you know the year, when the last time they were purchased?
Well, the original radio system and ring was installed in 2006.
Six, okay.
Then throughout the years of replacing radios, repairing radios, it's kind of a typical practice. It's not, to fall into not having radios all of a sudden, it doesn't happen, well, they've never heard of it, especially our engineering firm that we work with. Yeah, so this is a rare incident. This happened back in basically March or April, and we're kind of chewing our fingernails. We had to wait for design, testing, quotes, stuff like that.
So you're going without right now?
I'm sorry?
You're going without radio right now?
Oh, no, we have radios, but we have no spare.
I see, I see.
Yeah, so basically if a radio goes down, depends on what radio, if it's a ring radio, then it'll continue going back and forth. We have, but if it's a radio at our pump station, the only way it'll work is if we physically go there, turn the well on, watch a tower raise, turn the well off.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, Alderman, Model?
Yeah, I guess the last question that comes up a lot, there's a huge discrepancy between the lowest bid and the highest bid. Are we sacrificing quality here, or is that just a?
I, we, our engineering firm actually asked the highest bid, I think it was Primex, and they just said that they were super busy.
They just didn't want it? Gotcha.
They were super busy and they just threw a bid out.
And this is enough to get you state-of-the-art equipment?
This is, this is state-of-the-art. This is actually simplifying our system.
Good.
Yeah, so right now, well, we can, that's another story, but it's actually simplified, yep.
Good.
Alderman, Donald?
Just out of curiosity, LW Allen is the contractor, I assume that they not, they don't manufacture the equipment?
No, no.
Do you know what make it is?
Well, there's a couple different ones. There's MDS orbits that we're looking at, those are more common, there's a, let me see which other one was there. I think it's the orbit that we're looking at, it's, it's MDS.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, if, I don't know exactly if there's any more specific to manufacture than that.
That's good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Travis. Item number three, permission to bid contract 20-18 Tree Surety 2021. Good evening, Mike.
Evening. Our department is requesting permission to advertise for contract 2018 Tree Surety 2021. This is our annual street tree planting contract that will furnish and install 306 street trees throughout the city of West Bend. As part of the Tree Surety program, which is with our developers agreements, 44 trees will be planted in new residential developments, 245 trees will be planted as part of, as part of the Free Street Tree program and the Emerald Ashmore Response Program, and 17 trees in the 18th Avenue Street Tree Demonstration Plot, the one that's currently located north of Chestnut, and we are starting another one just north of Park Avenue. The contract is anticipated to begin in the spring of 2020. In an effort, in an effort to get lower bids, our goal is to bid the contract now. This will give our contractors time to locate trees and get our work on their schedule. The preliminary estimate for this project is $80,600, which includes a 3% contingency. The funding for this contract will include the Tree Surety funds, capital monies, and we also have an account designed for the Free Street Tree Planting, Emerald Ashmore Response, and a majority of those monies came from donations, fired wood sales, and carryovers from 2020. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Any questions for Mike? Yes, Alderman, Donald, please.
Mike, I forgot to, I could have just contacted you before I was, and I forgot. The Tree Surety, so the developers, is that they put money in as part of their obligation?
That is correct.
Until the trees are planted?
Yep, the developer will be responsible for each vacant planting site in front of each residential house or property. Each tree, they would pay $350 for each tree to be planted in those locations. Once the houses are built and the area between the curb and sidewalk is to final grade, maybe not seeded, but the final grade, then we would look at that as a viable planting site. So the majority of the construction on the new building is done, concrete trucks have come and gone, contractors have come and gone, we can safely plant the tree, and for the most part, it's at the same time the residents doing their own final landscaping, things like that. We also send a notice out to the residents in the spring to say, hey, your trees are still coming, this is what you're getting, things like that. So we do that for Tree Surety, Free Street Tree, anything like that. So that's where that, where the Tree Surety comes in, it's all new development, residential development.
All right, anybody else? Any other questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And good evening. I'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for October 19th to 2020. Notice that all Aldermen are present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in the House of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, our government, individual, the person who has to serve our people.
Thank you. I'll notice that we have 10 items on our agenda, the first being presentations, and it's a presentation by QuadMed on our shared clinic. So come on up, welcome.
Thank you. There you go. Thanks. Thank you all for having us today. So I do want to let you know, we do have a couple attendees by WebEx, by phone, they may be able to listen in or talk. We have Dr. Lunn, our medical director, as well as Jim Mikulski from our finance department. So, I am Carrie Zottle, the Client Operations Manager for QuadMed. Wanted to start with just a summary of the Health Center services to update everyone on what we're doing each and every day. So we manage acute and chronic care, mainly family practice care for those aged two and older. We also have a lab on site that can process internal orders from the provider, as well as external orders from other physicians in the community and process labs there. We have an extensive treatment of the chronic medical conditions, so those with diabetes, high blood pressure, hyperlipidemia, things like that, we manage those conditions. Also depression and anxiety management and medication, which we'll talk more about. We also see all the acute care, so anything you would go to the doctor for, cold, cough, flu, infection, any sort of skin rash infection, our provider on site does do some procedures, mole, wart, and skin tag removal, as well as stitch and stitch removal. Additionally, we do a lot of preventative care, so making sure people get their physicals, well checks, sports, and school physicals for children, as well as women's well checks, including paps and pelvics, any blood pressure monitoring, adult and pediatric immunizations, and of course biometrics for the incentive plan. Any questions on the services? Great. We wanted to summarize the 2019 Health Center highlights. So last year for 2019, we saw over 1,000 total visits, 356 out of 572 members visited the Health Center, and about 62% of patients served, so of the population. Very well utilized, one of our best in our book of business. Top visit reasons for those were biometric appointments, immunizations, so flu and other vaccines, hypertension of management, prescription refills, doing prescription refills on site, and then cough. So cough meaning, you know, anything that's flu, cold, season-related, okay? The PCP panel, so that's primary care panel, our provider Holly has her own panel of primary care patients she tends to do, and almost 70% of them are regularly treated for chronic conditions. This would include high blood pressure, hyperlipidemia, COPD, which is chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, asthma, depression, and diabetes, okay? So a lot of people with consistent medical needs. We talk about referrals, these are our common reasons for referral out of our Health Center. You can imagine outside in the community, the referrals happen more predominantly as people try to keep things in the system and expand the care and get those people treated and making sure that they get a lot of extra tests and measures. Here, we do handle most of it internally on site. Our top referral reasons are for those preventative things we cannot do at the clinic, which would include mammograms and colonoscopies, Cologuard screening for those cancers. Additionally, another top referral is physical therapy to address all the musculoskeletal needs, aches and pains, sprains and strains, and of course referring to therapy first as a conservative means prior to any specialist orthopedic, okay? Additionally, we do have medication management on site. Over 400 prescriptions were written last year, and we did dispense almost 300 pre-packed medications. Those are medications we keep on-site at the Health Center that are available and accessible for everyone in need. They're at a significant decreased cost for the employee and of course all of the city. Those are mostly for the chronic conditions we discussed. So if you see the top medications dispensed, include hypertension, again, high blood pressure, elevated cholesterol, diabetes, and then thyroid disorders, so again, those chronic conditions, okay? Happy to report patient satisfaction, overall quality of care is 97%, and provider recommendation is 98%. Any questions? Great. Our next slide goes into what is happening in, I'm going to scroll it down so you all can see, in, so far in 2020. So you can imagine, this for all of us, nothing a year we've expected or ever hoped for. In the medical field, it has been, of course, an unprecedented time with a lot of changes needing to keep, be in place. As we trend through the first nine months of the year shown here, you can see we started off normal and regular, you can see a dramatic drip in Q2, starting in late March and through April, in our visits on site. You will also see on the right there, as soon as we could not see people in this Health Center due to the safer-at-home restriction, as well as the CDC recommendations to only do essential care at that time, we implemented virtual care. So we immediately gained access for all the employees of the city of West Bend to make sure that they were still being treated, could still visualize and see their provider, and get the care they needed timely, okay? Nurse in labs, same thing, saw a dip through Q2, ramping back up here. Those nurse visits are consistent with blood pressure checks, height checks, flu shots, labs, again, drawing any blood draws, and additionally doing strep and flu testing, okay? So, we talk further as to into 2020. As we all know, this has been nothing but the most challenging year. We feel that we have been a valuable resource in really taking intimate care of the city of West Bend employees. The chart there on the bar graph shows in blue the provider clinics, the provider visits in person, and then the gray highlights virtual and telephonic care. So as we stated, there is a essential visit-only timeframe. At that point, we pivoted and went to doing phone visits and virtual care. At that time, through those encounters, we were able to address all patients' acute care needs, we were able to refill medications, sometimes extending those so people didn't have to come in as frequently, as well as answer questions. The phones at that point did blow up, as people had concerns about their care and their health and their symptoms that were coming about, and everything we could do to help, okay? Additionally, we did proactive outreach on a COVID risk assessed score. So we took the primary care patient list, based on people's comorbidities and their medical conditions, risked assess them to ensure that those who are at the highest risk from COVID were contacted immediately to understand what precautions they should take, what concerns they had, answer questions and help relieve their fears and anxieties. Okay? So additionally, we were happy to announce that in August, we did have access and began the rapid COVID testing. So the rapid COVID testing is a nasal swab that's less invasive versus the PCR test, which is nasal pharyngeal swab. You can say, people say it was tickling their brain, it was much more intense and painful. We did implement that test where we now get the results at the Health Center in less than 30 minutes. It has been a win. I know there's a lot of questions and concerns about the variety of testing. The test that we chose to use and that we are using with QuadMed has 100% specificity and 96.7% sensitivity. It's one of the highest quality tests in terms of accuracy. Okay. Additionally, what we do from here on out, unfortunately, we know COVID is not going anywhere, we continue to reach out to patients in need. We are making sure that the precautions are being taken for those who are at risk, those with comorbidities and other diagnoses. We have done outreach and insured and been present to make sure vaccines are up to date. We want everyone to be vaccinated to protect themselves and make sure that they do have the proper understanding of what that can do to help them. Physicals and wellness, we talked about how in March and April, it was very much advised to avoid going to the doctor, avoid going physicals, essential immediate care only. We are then now making sure that those people who missed out on those visits are getting back in the Health Center. For those who are not comfortable doing so, we are handling this virtually. However, for those who are ready and willing, we want to encourage them to get in and get in timely, so that their problems or anything that needs to be addressed is not overlooked and becoming a bigger problem in 2021. So we are doing outreach to make sure physicals and wellness exams are up to date. Additionally, we continue to monitor all of those with chronic conditions, making sure they understand what they need and making sure that they know that they need to continue to adhere to their medical plan. Financial status. So, as we discussed, again, not the year that we had hoped for in terms of what had happened to the visits. We did see a decrease in visits so far, Q3 of 2020 versus 2019. Our provider visits are down 23% only year-to-date, and we are happy to report that as of Q2, they were down 37%. So this increase over the last quarter is significant. People are willing to get back in the clinic, we are able to do things, spacing appointments, making sure they're safe. Operating costs are up due to an increase in supplies in 2020. Looking at that, it's mainly vaccines, vaccine costs are heightened this year, as well as the COVID antigen testing supplies. So that affects operating costs. Our gross savings, this takes into account redirected claims and downstream care savings. This is down 12% only from the last year, and this is directly correlated to the decrease in the visits through Q3, okay? Taking the gross savings and the operating costs, we then get the net savings, which again is less than in 2019. However, we are ecstatic to report, we still have a positive ROI of 1.58 this year so far, and as we continue to grow in visits and get people in through the end of the year, we'll continue to return back closer to two through the end of the year. Any questions? Yes?
Where is, if you said this at the start, I missed it, where is the clinic located?
It is in the courthouse building.
Oh, okay. And I'm one of the newer Aldermen, so I have a question, but, so I wasn't here when this was started.
Yep.
This is done because it, we're self-insured, and this can, if it's successful as it appears to be because of the ROI, this means that we are saving money on our healthcare costs?
Correct. Yep.
Is there any other questions?
What other, do you serve just City of West Bend, or are other municipalities a part of this?
This is a sharing relationship with the county of West Bend.
Okay, so county and City of West Bend, employees both?
Correct.
And then you said you're down in visits this year 23%, and visits are down 37% at the end of Q2, noting an increase in visits in Q3. Is Q3?
Not current. So this goes through Q3. So when we looked at it in June of, end of Q2, we were down 37%, which is the norm. I think in the medical community, it was over 40% that most medical communities were seeing down. We were at 37. Through this quarter, the increase in visits, getting people in, reaching out to them, making sure they understand, has limited that to only being 23% down. So we made gains in Q3.
Okay, and then what kind of goes into a ROI number?
So that shows, the ROI there is the operating cost compared to the savings. Yep, and so the ROI is at one point, you've, it's $1.58 return on every dollar invested in the Health Center.
Okay. And then, like, is it a cost to the employee to visit? I'm sorry, I'm also newer, so does the employee pay, I don't know, $10 to come visit and the city pays $10 in, or is it all one lump, only certain things are included?
For the employees, there's no co-pays for the plan for the city employees.
Okay, so when they come to the center, it's free?
Correct.
And then the cost to the city depends on what the treatment or what the?
So that's based on what is billed technically, just like a regular. So every visit has codes associated to it, and then there's bills for that. There is a charge, I believe, Michelle, for the five, for $5 for refill prescriptions. That's the only charge.
In addition to their co-pay?
There are no co-pays.
There's no co-pay on a prescription, so $5, okay. Okay. Um, thank you.
Yep, Alderman now.
During, now that you're back into normal or quasi-normal, is it by appointment, or do people just show up and wait together in the incubator to catch more diseases?
There's no incubator, yeah. We are scheduling everything by appointment. There are screening questions involved before every visit. I should note, and I forgot to add, all COVID testing is being done outside, so if somebody is symptomatic and would approach the clinic, we would not actually let them in the clinic in the risk of infecting anyone else in the Health Center, so they are COVID tested in their car, okay, just like other drive-by. And then additionally, and every other visit is spaced out. If we do have sick patients, meaning we know someone calls, they need to be tested, we're scheduling them at a certain time of day, so that healthy people are in one section, sick people are in another section, to allow for proper cleaning and infection control, and additionally limit the use of repeated PPE. So there's supply limitation, and we're trying to make sure that we stay on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council?
I can actually add a little, oh, sorry. How's my sound check? Dr. Lunn here, good evening, everyone. I can actually address that previous question even with a little bit more detail. We are actually in the process of drafting actual guidelines for each of our clinics, but I'm happy to say that both the West Bend and the Washington County clinics have already started the process where we realize certainly that there will be individuals that are ill and need to be evaluated in the clinic, and there are certainly things that are not COVID that need further evaluation. So we have a very, very thoughtful process in place where there is a nearly 20-point triage or screening that is done over the phone. For those individuals that need to be tested, they will be tested first by our rapid engine with that rapid response, and also I should mention is probably less than a fifth of the cost of the traditional PCR, which can take anywhere from three to 10 or more days to result back. In addition, we are following very closely the guidelines for our rapid testing, that if there is still suspicion that an individual actually has COVID and may have a false negative test of the rapid one, which is very rare, we will proceed for the confirmatory test. For those who truly rule out COVID, and we are very clear about that, we have a very, very thoughtful plan in place where those individuals can be evaluated in the clinic, and that entails everything from online check-in, immediately being escorted into an examination room, they will not be in the waiting room, all PPE. The patient will also be placed with a surgical mask rather than any cloth or homemade mask, and all of these other processes in place to, again, mitigate any type of risk to staff and to patients and future patients.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Dr. Lunn.
Any other questions from the council? Otherwise, thank you very much, Carrie. Thank you, Dr. Lunn, for presenting on that. Happy to have you here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, starting with item number two, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes of October 5th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Allen, second by Model. Any corrections, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And then item number three, Common Council Special Meeting Minutes of October 12th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model, again. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, if we can have a motion to approve items four and five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. Any more questions on those two items? Seeing none, all those in favor, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And we'll move on to items for consideration. The first is item number six, offer to purchase extension request for Trails Edge, and I believe Ian was going to give us that update.
So, if you recall, the city entered into a offer to purchase for Trails Edge over the summer. Part of that offer to purchase process was submitting a site plan and entering into a development agreement. The site plan has been presented to, it went to Plan Commission last meeting, correct? Went to Plan Commission. So we, they have, they have fulfilled that end of the obligations. We are working on the development agreement right now. There are a few approvals that we're waiting on for the environmental and some of the design features to get final approval through some of the state agencies, and there's a request to extend the offer to purchase to the beginning of February, just to allow those final boxes to be checked. Part of the thinking when we initially did it, entered into the offer, was to make sure that things moved along and that if something fell through, it ended up with us being able to seek other proposals. So I think the staff would recommend extending it to February because we're on track to move forward with breaking ground next spring at this point.
Yep, go ahead.
Motion to extend the purchase agreement to February.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. Are there any questions? Ian, yes, sir?
Everything's, I can't talk to Jaybo this-
Everything's, I can't talk to Jay about this earlier, but everything is still looking good, yeah?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything negative. It's just a matter of getting final approvals on a couple of items.
Awesome, awesome.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, thank you. And item number seven, ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend, Wisconsin for a change in the recommended land use from commercial and single-family residential to institutional for approximately 3.2 acres of land located at the northeast corner of South River Road and East Paradise Drive by Anthony Chemer of Paradise East Springs LLC. And Jim up here is going to give us an update of what's going on.
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking for council to endorse the ordinance to amend our comprehensive plan. We had a request to change the land use plan from commercial and residential to institutional. This request is to help facilitate the redevelopment of that corner at the northeast corner of Paradise and River Road. So they're requesting the change from the commercial and residential to the institutional. And there is also a zoning amendment that we're asking for consideration that's later on the agenda, to actually change that zoning from the B5 commercial and RS3 single-family to I1 institutional.
Sounds great. I'll ask for a motion to amend the 2020 plan.
Motion to amend.
Second.
I'm going to give this one to Dolanek, you guys have done enough. Motion to Dolanek, second to Allen. Are there any questions for Jim? Seeing none then, all those in favor of amending, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And then item number eight is what he was referring to, and that's to rezone. So look for a motion on that.
Motion to rezone.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then number nine, ordinance to rezone approximately 0.32 acres of land located west of 501 through 511 Mulberry Drive East from RD2, two-family residential district to RM4, multifamily residential district by Mike Thatcher of MJT Mulberry LLC. Jim?
Thanks. So this zoning amendment is to help facilitate the expansion of the multifamily building that exists on the property. The owner owns the property just west of that building and his request is to rezone that from the RD2, two-family residential to the RM4 multifamily, consistent with what his property is zoned for the multifamily building. Certified survey map was also done for the property to combine them. The property owner is desiring to build and construct a parking lot for the multifamily development out there. So the first step for, or part of the steps would be to change the zoning to make it all consistent for the certified survey map and the site plan approval.
Sounds good. So we'll be looking for the motion to rezone.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Hugestir and Allen, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, send my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, thanks, Jim.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we'll go to item number 10, review of the 2021 budget. Jay, you're going to give us an update.
So thanks again for last Monday and the detailed discussion. I heard, checked in with some of you and heard many positive comments about going through the budget in some detail and having a chance to learn more. I think anytime there's an opportunity to learn more about our budget, not just process, but the details contained therein is a win. I know there was some critical items discussed that evening and I guess I'm prepared to provide an update on some items that have moved a little bit and then just share that we're still waiting on a couple of more items before the budget is finalized. We do have to go forward with a publication. Tomorrow is our absolute deadline with the paper, so tomorrow we will be publishing the resolution with these numbers in them, waiting on tonight's conversation just in case there was some last-minute directive to, to move a number. But wanted to, to share with you all that we're still waiting on manufacturing from the state, so those manufacturing assessment numbers that we'd have zero control over, they come from the state. And Jeff Yoder, our assessor, is going to get them to us just as soon as they come in. And then the other piece is the TID apportionment, and we always get that late in the game from the municipalities because they need to know what they're setting from their respective levies as well. So we oftentimes go to publication not knowing every final piece of it. So don't be alarmed by that, but just know that this budget could move a little bit based on how those, those numbers finally come in. And we'll share with you that at the last meeting, we were still discussing health insurance and allocations contained therein. I shared with you that we, we did remove $400,000 from the original request, which is in the HR budget for health insurance. And that $400,000 had a allocating effect through different budgets, including library. So there is a $34,000, and I can send you these numbers, I literally was working on them with Carrie, right up until the beginning of this meeting and the end of the day today. So the, the number in health insurance savings and library levy decrease is $34,000. That's direct savings from, from their budget according to the health insurance, again, reduction of $400,000. Overall, unfortunately, health insurance in the general fund is going up from the last time we talked. The allocation process and the latest numbers that have come in through our consultant, it's resulting in a $21,000 additional increase in, in general fund health insurance. So if you recall the last time we talked about this, it was a $202,000 increase. It's now a $223,000 increase. And that does include an increase, or is offset, if you will, by an increase in proposed employee premium contributions. I listened to your conversation last Monday and had more conversations with our, our consultant and department heads. And we are, I am recommending an increase of $10 in employee single-plan contribution and a $20 employee family plan contribution. The last time we raised those rates, as was mentioned at the last meeting, was 2018. That would take us, so I know there was a recommendation to keep the percentages the same. I'm not recommending that level of increase. The percentage is the same at 19 and 14 would have resulted in a $528 family plan annual increase. This recommendation is a $240 family plan annual increase. And conversely, for the 19% maintenance of that percentage would have resulted in a $272 single-plan increase, and I'm recommending a $120 single-plan increase. And again, I'll share all these numbers with you all yet this evening. That's, that's really it for health insurance. I don't anticipate, and we had another conference call today at, at noon with Carrie, myself and Michelle and our Horton consultants on the, on the health insurance plan for 2021. I don't anticipate any significant swings one way or the other before the November 9th budget hearing. So I don't know if you want me to pause there, Mayor, and then go on through the rest of the numbers or just keep rattling them off, but that's, I know health insurance was a, was a big item of discussion for you. And it always is, it's a significant part of our budget and a significant part of the, the increase, if you will, for 2021.
I'll just open up if there is any questions on the health insurance piece. I guess you can keep going, Jay.
Okay. So you also heard that the landfill, we zeroed out the $250,000 landfill increase. I, I did transfer $50,000 of the contingency number, so it has a net zero impact on the levy, but I want you to know that, that's something that I inkled at the last time we, we talked about this item. And after more discussions, it's, it's just the prudent thing to do to put an additional $50,000 in that line item. We're confident that it's not the sky is falling situation that we were afraid of, you know, a year or so ago at this time, but it's still, and a situation where we know we're going to spend some additional dollars in 2021 and, and putting the appropriate, or at least more closely appropriate number in that line item. Again, I recommend is the prudent thing to do. So we're taking down the contingency $50,000 and adding, or moving the $50,000 over to additional monies in the landfill account. I'll go on to building permit rev, these next two are, are new revenues or additional revenues, if you will, that I'm recommending increasing. They do, anytime you increase line items, you insert a little more risk into your budget. We, we've had a fair amount of development proposals. Our plan commission at this last, plan commission meeting in October saw significant potential development in 2021. And I'm recommending a $30,000 increase in our building permit revenue. I've had conversations with Mark Petrovich about that and he certainly understands that, that the need for that is based on some of the conversations that we had and also the development. If it all comes as planned, we can certainly hit that number, but just know that there's some risk by not, by not hitting that number if, if for some reason, the development proposals, including the one that you just extended into 2021, I don't anticipate that going away, but until the building's up, we never really know in, in the end, until the permits are issued. So the second one is interest rates. Carrie and I have had lots of conversations about this. We are recommending an increased $15,000 revenue in the interest rate column. I don't know how much more needs to be said about that. Again, it's a risk factor, it's an unknown factor, election factor, all of those things go into play, but we do the best that we can with projecting out the, the number for the coming year and feel comfortable enough recommending a $15,000 increase. TID on levy, we're fortunate to be able to reduce by $24,000. We've had, we have two TIDS that are on levy and you'll get a chance to review in detail the TID budgets at the December meeting. That's when we finally have enough data to, to bring those forward to you. We can share with you that there are two developer agreements that, after extensive conversations with Mark and, and Carrie, that we're able to reduce the levy impact in 2021 by $24,000 and, and banking on those TID agreements coming to fruition. So Ian and I might be working closely with the owner developers on those to make sure that we, we gain those payments, but we're, again, I'm confident that we can and that's why I'm reducing the levy $24,000 for those developer agreements. The library levy already mentioned is down $34,000 and then a parks levy item that we had double counted for a brief time as part of the library expansion. We put some funds in the, in the library account and funds in the parks account based on when the department had to turn in the budgets. We've correcting that for a tune of $2,000. I think that concludes my list of items. I shared the two items that we're still waiting for. And then some of you have asked in the past, that, that eight-cent increase reflect, or that nine-cent increase reflected a $258,000 difference rate over year, year over rate, 785 up to 794. This brings the tax rate down to 793, so a proposed 2021 increase of eight cents. And that's represented by a number of $240,000. If there's any questions, I'll attempt to answer them. Carrie was unable to attend tonight, so if there's any detailed questions about a line item or budget that I need her expertise with, we'll certainly, I'll certainly defer to a conversation that her and I can have and then get back to you. And these are the numbers that are going to go to the, again, the resolution that we need to publish tomorrow morning in the news, in official newspaper. And any future changes would need to take place at the November 9th meeting.
Sounds great. I'll open up for any comments or questions. You have one? Yep, Alderman, Carrie?
I just wanted to thank Jay and the staff for all their hard work on the budget. I know a lot goes into it, a lot of meetings and a lot of numbers. Thank you, I'm glad to see that we did kind of get a, a few changes in there, trying to kind of lower that 5% levy increase that we're facing this year, which is going to amount in the eight cent now tax increase. But I do just want to reiterate to my constituents that due to COVID, I understand their struggle and I do not support increasing taxes at this time on the City of West Bend. I do want to see a flat tax rate to last year.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir, Alderman Dolanek.
Do you have any suggestions how we would do that, Megan?
I thought we discussed them in the last week.
I mean, how, how we would? Okay, so, I'm sorry, so you, going back to what you, your suggestions would add up to that amount?
Yeah, exactly. And, and I am open to anyone else's suggestions and creative ideas. I didn't hear many the other night, but I am absolutely open to anything we can do to try to save that 248K is what we're looking at now. Opportunity that we can keep that flat for our constituents. People are struggling. I know a lot of people are laid off, businesses closing for loans, et cetera. So I just really don't want to pass additional cost on to our taxpayers at this time.
Sounds great. Any other comments, questions on the budget for Jay? Jay, do you need any sort of action or anything?
No, typically the second meeting in October and some of you are new to the council either again, or new to the council. That, that's how we've been operating in the past few years, is the second meeting in October after the budget, formal budget presentation. And in this case, a formal review of the budget at a special meeting. We've just had a chance to update you with the latest information that we have and no action needed, just a heads up that we're moving forward with the resolution.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to reports with item number 11, a report by Alderman Model regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Okay. The bid board met on Tuesday, October 6th at 8:15 a.m. at the City Hall Council Chambers. We did go over a financial report, pretty standard stuff. We talked a little bit more about the, the steps involved in establishing a historic district and voted in favor of consulting, of hiring a consultant to complete the nomination process. Talked a little bit more about holiday decorations. We're going to be adding more this year, so look for that, that'll be really cool. Tree lighting ceremony, this year will be November 5th at 7 p.m. And we are looking for volunteers for Monday, November 2nd. Holiday decorations will be installed throughout the downtown and we need your help. Let's see, Settlers Park on Monday, November 2nd at 8 a.m. And then the last thing we talked about, I know there's been a lot of talk, yea and nay, on the, the new development site being proposed for the brewery site at Washington and Main. The bid did, in fact, write a letter of support to the developer. The, the folks in the bid do understand the significance of that spot, but we've also had a couple of developers look at it and go through the process and there's just not a whole lot that can be done, unfortunately. Yeah.
That's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Model? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jeff, Mal and I, I'm not sure, did you say when they were going to put out the Christmas decorations downtown?
Yeah, there's a tree, there's a lighting ceremony on the 5th and the actual putting in of the decorations is on the 2nd. And that's, I guess they're meeting at Old Settlers Park. It's on a Monday at 8 a.m.
Okay, this is November?
Yeah, November 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Then we'll move to item number 12, a report by Alderman Dolanek or Hugestir regarding the plan commission.
So I have it. Some of the items we, we covered today or tonight that were at plan commission and we finalized them tonight. The other issues were, the Barton Sitco was approved for exterior alterations, so to make it look nicer. You're familiar with the Trails and Apartments. We approved the site plan for the Trails and Trails Edge Apartments. We also had a concept plan for the major undertaking at Main and Washington. And we gave preliminary unofficial approval for the concept plan. There was also a lengthy discussion about a proposal on Sand Drive in my district for multifamily housing and senior housing. It didn't go real well and some tweaking is going to be necessary on that plan before I think it goes any further and there'll be more to come about that.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Dolanek?
Did you say the Burton Sitco?
Yes.
Nice. Thank you.
We'll get a nice facelift. It'll be good.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
All right. Any other questions for Alderman Dolanek? Otherwise, I'll move on to item number 13, a report by either Alderman Allen or Kayler regarding the tourism commission. Who's taking that?
We met on the 13th.
Randy, do you mind turning your mic on?
Early. We met on the 13th and Tekla with Habitat Free Early. We met on the 13th, and Tecla with Habitat for Humanity came in and gave a report on their tailgate. Didn't do quite as well as they wanted, but they did pretty good considering the circumstances and the COVID and all that stuff. So was still a positive report. We received and looked over the Bike Around the Bend marketing proposal that Jeff presented to us and gave approval to move forward with that. Moa was in, in attendance and gave us a brief rundown of their happenings, being that we were discussing our budget. She shared some numbers from there. West Bend Theater was also on hand as they are looking for some dollars and gave us an update on their situation. Washington County Tourism, I can't remember her name, I apologize, came in and gave us a report on what they have done for us. We looked at the overall budget, and we did table the final, we, we made a revision to the number, but we tabled the final tabulations until our next meeting to give the Chamber of Commerce an opportunity to come in and give us a report on what they are doing with the money we allocate to them. So we have a meeting on the, I believe it's the 17th of November. I think that's it, Mark. I miss any?
No, no other than kudos to Jeff for the work they've done already initially on the Bike Around the Bend. Looks great.
Thank you. Alderman Kayler, were there any talks about estimates yet of how you'll split the funding, or is that all on hold, like you said?
It's, we, we did discuss it, but I guess I won't close that until we, we get to our final numbers. They needed a, a number to put in the budget, but we've decided to skip the allocations until Chamber of Commerce gets an opportunity to tell us why they need the money they're asking for.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions for Alderman Kayler? All right, I will open it up for announcements if there's any for the go-to-the-order. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I would like to remind West Bend residents, trick-or-treating is in two weeks, I think the 31st of October, so Saturday. Just be careful. There is conflicting guidelines out there for the, from the Center for Disease Controls and the county. So just recognize there's a risk and be careful.
Thank you very much. Any other comments for the go-to-the-order or announcements? Seeing none, we've completed the meeting, and I'll adjourn by the call to chair. Have a great night.